Is that Siri or somebody else? It's probably somebody else. It's a different brand, right? All right. So as was mentioned, all the folks who are going to be here from us are here. So I'll call the special meeting of the Union Township Planning Commission to order, and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right.
Pledge allegiance.
A allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I will say, I think that was our least in sync one yet, but that's just me. All right. So let's see. Roll call, please.
Squattrito.
Present in the city of Mount Pleasant in Isabella County.
Buckley.
Present, Union Township, Isabella County.
Albrecht.
Present, Union Township, Isabella County.
Darren.
Present, Union Township, Isabella County.
Fuller.
Present, Union Township, Isabella County.
I have LaBelle, which is excused. Lapp.
Present, Union Township, Isabella County.
Shingles, excused. Thering.
Present, Union Township, Isabella County.
Okay, thank you. So we have two sets of minutes because if you'll recall, there were a couple of corrections to our June 15 minutes involving the people named in different motions. And so it was decided to postpone consideration of those. We'll take those up first. So you've got the minutes from the regular June 15 meeting. Are there any further corrections to those minutes? And if not, I'd entertain a motion to approve the June 15 minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from June 15.
Second.
Okay, so the motion was by Fuller, second by Darren to approve the June 15 minutes. Any further discussion? If not, I'll just ask for a voice vote then. All in favor of approving the June 15 minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I'll declare that motion carried, so the June 15 minutes are approved. And then our last regular meeting was in July, and that was July 20th. So you also have the July 20th minutes in your packet. Are there any corrections to the July 20th minutes? We can have a motion to approve those.
I move to approve the July 20 minutes.
Your second.
Second them.
Okay. So the motion was by Lapp and a second by Albrecht to approve the July 20th regular meeting minutes as submitted. Further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. So our minutes are approved. We're up to date on those. We're going to be having our regular meeting in a week, but nevertheless, we've got any reports. So first one is Thering from updates from Board of Trustees.
Yes, the Board of Trustees did approve or follow the recommendation of the Planning Commission on the Crist oil filling station. That was completed on the 28th of July.
Okay.
And that that's it at this point.
Any questions for Commissioner Thering related to Board of Trustees matters? That meeting was conducted in person, is that right?
That is correct.
Are your plans, have your plans changed at all to continue meeting in person?
Not as of yet.
Okay. There. Okay, thank you for that report. Next is Buckley from Zoning Board of Appeals.
We have not yet had a meeting in July. I do believe actually that we do have an item on the agenda for early September. I believe it's a I can't remember if it's September 1st or if it's actually, if that's the first one that hits or not, but we do have something on the agenda, so hopefully by later in September, I'll be able to give you guys a legitimate update here on the actions of the ZBA.
Okay, sounds good. Far be it from me to say that your updates are illegitimate at the current, but we'll look forward to that. Any questions for Commissioner Buckley on ZBA-related matters? Okay, if not, then last one is Darren, updates from sidewalks and pathways.
And we have not met since quite a while, so I think that's going to be a norm, so I do not have an update.
Okay. I think your last up, didn't, weren't you all working on some sort of what do we want to say?
Priorities.
Yeah, updating of the priority list?
Yep, yep, and we did present those to Rodney. But that was, that was the last meeting that I gave. I said that we hadn't presented those to Rodney.
Okay.
Then I can, I can add to that, that I've presented in the budget for next year, in our recommendations for the budget, so that will be coming ultimately to the Board of Trustees later in the fall, but I've done my part to get the numbers in there for them.
He knows.
Very good. Can you remind, what is the fiscal year? Is it, is October one?
It's, no, it's a calendar year.
Oh, okay. So this would be for 2022 then?
That's correct.
Okay, so they have a while to work on that. All right. Any questions for Commissioner Darren on sidewalks and pathways related matters? Okay, so none. We'll move on. Any other correspondence or presentations that anyone has? Okay, so we will move on. Uh, oh, okay. So this one, this was apparently presented on an old template because the approval of agenda, which I missed, was, is down where it used to be instead of at the top. So, my bad. But it's here, so we should go ahead and approve our agenda. So are there any other, we're here, of course, to deal with the zoning ordinance amendments. Is there anything else anyone has that needs to be on tonight's agenda? If not, then I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion was by Darren's, or second?
Second.
Second by Thering. Any further discussion? On favor of approving our agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, so our agenda is approved. All right, so before we move on to that business, then we have public comment, so this is restricted to three minutes regarding items that are not on tonight's agenda. If there's anyone who would like to address the Planning Commission on any item that's not on tonight's agenda, we ask you to hit your raise hand button. We will acknowledge that and facilitate your ability to speak. We ask you to give us your name and address for the minutes and limit your comments to three minutes. Public comment is open at 7:10. And we don't have any attendees tonight, so we'll go ahead and close that back up. All right, so we are at other business because we had started this discussion briefly at our last meeting. And so this is the zoning ordinance amendment, the punch list items, the documents were distributed in the July meeting packet, so you should have those, including the narrative introduction from township staff as well as the marked up marked up amendment sections themselves. So we're here tonight to go through that, to make our own comments, express concerns and so on, and then decide whether it's ready to have a public hearing, and if so, set a public hearing date. If not, then possibly postpone action. So is there any, you want to, you want to set this up again for us or not?
Well, I think, I think actually, Phil, you have done an excellent job of setting it up. I think last time we talked briefly about some of the highlights that are in our, in our report from July the 12th. My, I guess my suggestion would be to start off with if people, if any commissioners have concerns about a particular change or a question about a particular change, it might be good to start with those and then move on from there.
Okay. Yeah, it's probably, it's probably long enough and it might, even though, even though it might involve jumping, or a question would be try to go through it chronologically or page-wise, or just let people jump in. But we can try just letting people jump in with their concerns and then if we get all those covered, then perhaps that will pile just that will get us where we need to be. So I will open the floor to any commissioner who has any point that they want to raise about the proposed changes. Either just a question or a comment or, or any sort of, any sort of concern. Commissioner Darren.
So the one thing, just going through this, and I just, it's all clarification, but Farm Implement Sales and Repair. I guess the, and it's not even in our jurisdiction, but Wrecker Motorsports sells, I believe they're considered farm tractors on their lot, where they also sell UTVs, motorcycles, all that stuff. And I, and I just want clarification that is it, is it the word primarily for the sale of, is, is are we differentiating like the John Deere dealership in Rosebush? I guess that would be the ultimate definition of this Farm Implement Sales and Repair. Does a Wrecker's Motorsports that sells farm implementation and implements, I'm sorry, implements and farm tractors, even being small? Does that fall in this category, or how do we differentiate that?
That's a, that's a great question. The, you know, I would say the answer, the short answer is no, because what you've described really is a situation where the farm implement sales are are a secondary activity or accessory activity. However, there certainly be cases where that's fuzzy. Or where a business comes in and starts out one way and starts evolving into something else. The main reason to include this is really to provide support for, for the agricultural community. If we're going to have commercial agriculture in the township, which of course we do have a substantial area still occupied by by commercial agriculture. If we're going to have that, we need to supply, provide the support services, or at least make them legal to exist. So, and that's really what this is intended for. We could use the word exclusively instead of primarily. And as you said, it would be essentially the John Deere dealer, but even a John Deere dealer sells t-shirts and, and models.
Toys and yeah.
Yeah, so that's why the word primarily was used to, and this is a special use, so this would be one where you would ultimately be making a judgment call. They would provide the information to you. They would give you a detailed use statement, which our ordinance requires. And you would have to come to a conclusion if they meet this requirement or not, this definition.
Okay, okay. And I can live with that, but I just wanted to make sure.
Yep.
Another question was actually on the front page, the Agricultural Services Establishment. And I assume this is for something like down on Ithcon 27, where, you know, they're, they're taking from the farmers, storing it, drying it, putting it in rail car, putting it in tankers, whatever, whatever it is. And we're starting to see those pop up remotely in, you know, kind of an intermediate. I was wondering, for the farmers who are taking beets off of their fields, if they can't go directly to, over to Pioneer Sugar. I've seen like up in Sanford where they'll take a parking lot and they just start dumping it there. They want to get it off the field and dump it there. Do we, should we call that out here? Or is it covered? Because I guess I didn't really see it unless you want to call it farm support services. Another special use that that we could
Yeah, we certainly could call it out, but I think that it would be very reasonable to find it's a farm support service that and certainly Pioneer Sugar has created those. Obviously, some have been ad hoc, like you said, just taking a parking lot, but, but they've also created places around the I know some Glavine County where, where it kind of interim storage area, and that's, that would be an option if potentially under this provision.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Commissioner Lab.
I hear some rationale on Part 29, the amendments to Section 14.3 on having the Planning Commission make the final determination on special use permits. I think you had referenced that earlier, but as I'm pretty new to the board, I was wondering if you could provide that rationale again for that change?
Sure. The, you as a planning commission, you have training that you have opportunities to go through. I know COVID has been that challenging, but, but you also have, let's call it the day-to-day experience related to looking at these types of applications and that they're on your agenda on a regular basis. You also hold the hearing for a special use permit application. So you have, generally by the time you're, you are considering a special use application, you have a pretty intimate knowledge base related to that. The Board of Trustees does not. The, and so one of the reasons to look at, at making this change is to keep the decision in the place where the most experienced and the most knowledgeable decision makers are, and that's really with the Planning Commission. This is actually a very common thing today. It was not years ago. Years ago, most special use permits went to a Board of Trustees or a city council, like the elected officials. That's actually very, pretty rare today. And that, that planning commissions today, as I said, have many more opportunities for training, that they tend to have more opportunities to have professional advice in the room, whether it's somebody like myself or Peter or a township attorney. And so the comfort level with having a planning commission have final authority over this has grown to the point where, as I said, it's pretty rare that a community still sends a special use permit application to the elected board. From a political point of view, there is a very good reason to, to keep the approval process at the planning commission level. And that is that especially use permit applications are by nature potentially controversial. They, you know, as we experienced with the jail project. They, they, they can be a tough call because there are people that are very passionate in favor and very passionate against potentially. Various factions can, can develop. We can have a occasionally standing room only crowd coming to a special use permit hearing because, because of potential controversies associated with it. You as a planning commission are appointed by the Board of Trustees. You are not subject to the voters. And you're appointed for a fixed term and you actually have pretty strong protections in that you cannot be removed from your seat unless you commit malfeasance, which is a criminal act, misfeasance, which is a non-criminal, but nonetheless unethical, serious unethical action. Or non-feasance, which is basically you don't show up for multiple meetings. Those are the three reasons that you can be removed from office. And so, so you have a strong protection to be able to hold your seat for the full term. And in that, you are to some extent not and this is intentional, by the way, in terms of how planning commissions were created. You're not subject to the whims of politics in the same way that elected officials are. They have to face the voters. And so when a controversial issue comes up, you have the ability to look at it with, with a more objective eye. Now, we're not expecting you to be completely objective. You all have opinions, you all have points of view, and that's why you're here. But the idea is that you're, you're not going to be swayed by, by that room full of people. If the, if the answer to the question is yes, this should be approved. They meet all the criteria. You know, and you have a room full of people with pitchforks and such, saying, no, we don't want you to do this. You, you have the ability to, to say, you know what, the ordinance says that if it meets all the criteria, we must approve it, which is what it says. And then you would be able to take that action. Where Board of Trustees that has to face the voters may end up being unduly influenced by that, that mob, that crowd to make a decision that actually is against the law, against the ordinance, against state law. So there's a very, that, those are just some of the reasons to, to put this in your hands. One other reason is related to streamlining the approval process. In the vast majority of cases, I was talking with Peter about this after our last meeting. I think there was one time that Peter recalls where Board of Trustees made a different decision or took a different tact anyway than, than the planning commission did. And it's my experience in other communities that that is the same. It is a very rare event when, when a Board of Trustees or a city council will, will go against the, the recommendation of a planning commission related to special use. And largely that comes from the fact that, as I said, that you are the, essentially the experts on that application by the time you come to your decision. And the Board of Trustees is essentially looking at it first time. They don't have all of the background. They don't have necessarily all the the time spent, the hearing and time spent reviewing the matter, asking questions. You know, and so they are, they are very likely to simply follow your advice, and they have. So in that, in that framework, the opportunity to streamline the process by eliminating that additional step, which can take a month or add a month or more to the process, has some benefit to it.
So this is one of the more substantive changes in the, in the whole document. And in fact, it's one that goes beyond what one might call a punch list item. So I'd like to have some discussion of this, or at least, at least like to give everyone the opportunity to weigh in on this while we're on that topic. Because as I said, it is, it is a substantive change and it was one that I wanted to, to see discussed. So anyone have any particular thoughts on this? Or questions, comments?
Just the
I'm sorry, I thought I saw, I'll go to Alex and then I'll go to Mike.
I've seen a lot of special use permits and the people that are usually opposed to the special use permit have a lot of peace knowing that there's another meeting that they get to present their case to. So I know that gives some of those people some comfort that more than one board is reviewing the application.
Mike?
Interesting hearing what Alex had to say there. I was just going to say, it seems like we do all the work. And I should say the battling, and I think that, you know, pretty much like what you were discussing with Peter, we basically make the decisions for the board most of the time because we're getting that opportunity to really dig into it and beat it around with the applicant. But listening to Alex, you know, that, that one more shot, I don't know. I'm not usually on that end of the stick, so I don't know how they feel about having that second meeting to thrash it over with the board if they don't like our considerations, so.
Okay, other thoughts, Commissioner Thering?
I actually, similar to Mike until Alex said what he said, I think it's a great idea. But the board doesn't necess, unless the board goes back and we watch the meeting, you know, we don't get the full scope. Rodney does an excellent job of describing everything that's happened, but it's not quite the same if you don't attend the meeting. So if we don't attend the meeting, we don't typically get the full scope of, of what's going on, nor do we actually have not everyone has the experience that the planning commission does, you know, so I think I would be in favor of, of what's been proposed. But I guess I'd still like to think just a few, little bit longer about what Alex has said. I mean, the planning commission is, are the experts more so than the Board of Trustees. The Board of Trustees more or less just basically gives their final blessing, which might, like Alex said, might be comforting. I don't know.
Commissioner Buckley?
I think that Commissioner Fuller raises a good point. I think that that it is a valid concern that you know, regardless of which way a special use decision goes, that there is an additional opportunity for review. I, I think it sounds good on paper. I think in reality, though, I think the evidence bears out that there is not much of an additional review. It's, it, again, I mean, I don't want to say rubber stamp, but it is. You know, the evidence suggests that, just as other commissioners have said, that once we've kind of hashed it out, once there's been some, some real conversation about it, it's I think the board is relying on the fact that we have had those more in-depth debates and dialogue on it and given the fact that they probably are relying on it, and I don't blame them for doing so. It's natural to see why they, 99.9% of the time, go along with the planning commission's recommendation. I do think maybe the flip side of that is that if the board, if the board does were to, if there was a very controversial special use permit and it were to go to the board, and then there was, the board were to review or reverse a recommendation from the, or go against the recommendation from the planning commission, I do think that that there's a risk there for that to open the township up to some, perhaps some additional scrutiny as well, so I, I'm normally fairly vocal about what my opinion is on special uses and things like that, but I do think that I'm probably comfortable with putting it in the hands of the planning commission, letting them, let them kind of hash it out and then resting on the decision that's made there.
Other comments?
How would that have worked with that gravel pit? Didn't we approve it and the board then put the moratorium on?
Actually, the gravel pit, there was a hearing held. There was never any action taken at the end of the hearing. And that's something to keep in And that's something to keep in mind, uh just as as you did with the the Chris Doyle case. Uh and quite frankly, with that that gravel pit case. You can hold the hearing and take no action at that at that meeting. You you can take action if you choose, if you're ready. Uh but you also can say, you know what, we'd like to look at this further, or we have more questions. You know, these these things came up in the public hearing, you applicant, we want you to answer these questions and postpone action, you know, and and so sort of. In that way, you're giving and you know, the uh those that are attending and other opportunities speak at the next meeting if they choose to, won't be a public hearing. But then again, the board is not a public hearing either. The board, the members that come to a board meeting, I'm sorry, the public that comes to a board meeting. Speaks during the first public comment period. Uh and so they're speaking before any. Uh and if the item is under consideration, so it's just general comment that they can speak for three minutes on. The 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 agenda items they wish. Uh but uh anyway, you you always have the ability to simply say, we have questions, you applicant, we want answers from you. Uh from, you know, that came out of this hearing, we're gonna postpone action, ask you to. Get those answers and come back to us. And and then that way, give that additional time if you if you feel it's necessary.
Can I just clarify something you just said? Under our current system. Uh when it gets to the board of trustees, a special use permit, they are holding a public hearing, are they not?
They are not. No, the only hearing that's held is yours. It can hold a hearing if they choose to, or uh if somebody asks, I'm sorry, actually, they only they can if they choose to. It's a rezoning case that if somebody asks uh that the hearing is held, but anyway, they they they're not required to.
Okay, right. Other comments from people? Well, I'm just gonna offer my comments uh. I'm ske- I'm a skeptic on this, actually. Uh I think there's a good argument to be made. I I I I recognize. Uh the logic of Rodney's argument regarding um, you know. Appointed officials versus elected officials, but I think there's a good argument to be made from an accountability standpoint. That big decisions like this, uh having those decisions made by elected officials. Um that's point number one. And then point number two, I I I. I agree with Alex that I think there's at least a perception that because it's a two-tiered. Uh process that people do have have uh more opportunities to get their say. I mean. Uh you know, one of the arguments with the jail, people come in, they say, well, I'm just hearing about this. Uh I still feel in most cases that's perhaps because they weren't paying attention or reading the newspaper or what have you, but. Um I do think it's it for 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 big decisions, I I like it. I mean, the 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 way the jail played out here, frankly, the way the uh whether you agree with the outcome or not, the way the uh. The case down in Alma played out just recently with the uh. The possible um. Center for the refugees, so. Uh I I'm I'm not sold on this myself. Um. Other comments? Uh Commissioner Buckley, is that a new hand or an old hand?
No, oh, it's new. I just, I I I think you do make a good point. I I mean, that's certainly a credible argument. I'm just curious if Rodney has a sense, and I think I know the answer to this, but um can we have our cake and eat it too? Can we? Uh can the planning commissioner, can the planning commission? Choose to make the decision when they want and also choose to defer to the board when they want?
Uh no, that would be uh considered an arbitrary uh element, I suspect, by if we talk to the township attorney. Though it really needs to be either one way or the other.
Okay.
Yep. What about uh? Are there any, are there any uh municipalities that have some sort of uh appeal process built into their? To that. I I know they always have the the opportunity to go to court, but I mean, short of going to court, are there any that have. An orderly appeal process?
Well, one thing, uh no, typically not for special use permits and for good reason. Uh you know, we we talked about it, uh Mr. Fuller. Sort of talked about Commissioner Fuller talked about what amounts to a second bite of the apple, you know, the the members of the public having another opportunity to maybe get what they want. Um that that is actually a somewhat dangerous scenario. I think we mentioned, it was mentioned earlier. Uh you know, that that if if you recommend, let's say you recommend in favor and the board of trustees. Uh is swayed to to uh to deny, well, the township then is in a very weak legal position. Uh it is a board of trustees' decision and hopefully they they put some teeth into it, say why. But nonetheless, we're 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 in a situation where you as a planning commission said one thing and the board said something else. And if it goes to court, if all of that documentation gets in in the court record. Uh and so it would be far more challenging trying to defend the board of trustees' decision. Uh that's where, like I said, like if you if you simply made a decision, no, here are all the reasons why this is not appropriate. Let's say the jail. Uh you you say for these these five, six, seven, eight reasons, uh the special use permit for the jail is not appropriate. Your action, then, if that was final, uh is a very strong one. Uh you have, you've made a decision, you've backed it up with your findings of fact. Uh and the township can defend that very, very well. It it may be, you know, county may not like it. But but nonetheless, you've made a reasoned decision that is that essentially the township has spoken with one voice to say, this is what we've decided. Uh that that's that is a far more defensible process than than this possibility where we might literally get. You you saying one thing and the board of trustees ultimately decided the other way. The other problem you can have. Is the board of trustees looks at a case. Uh you recommend in favor, let's say, the board of trustees looks at it and says, well, you know, we don't really don't like it. We're not gonna make this decision. Instead, they send it back to you. And they send it back to you to look at it again. Put you in a very awkward spot. Uh what are you going to do to make the other, you know, give them the opposite motion? I mean, in a sense that. You know, that might be what they're fishing for, but you have you have made a decision, you backed it up, here are the reasons why you do what you did. And then all of a sudden, you're asked to look at it again. Potentially with the idea of, hopefully, you're making a different decision that the board can then can like, hey, I like that one and approve it. So again, we get a very weak uh weak decision, whatever that may be, one that's that that's easily challenged. And so having one body have the final say. And have that body, obviously, as you are, uh subject to the requirements of the zoning ordinance, you need to follow the standards there. And you have access to all the resources you need, uh whether it's myself or, as you said, they, if you need legal advice, then then uh. The township attorney would be here. Um so, you know, if having one body make that final decision ultimately is far more legally defensible. Than this this framework where things could go uh could go very awry if there was disagreement between the two bodies.
Well, one thing that I think is gonna happen, if we if we adopt this, I think that I think that uh. Well, obviously, we do our best to be careful regardless, but. You know, if it if it is the final decision with us, then I think we're definitely gonna err on the side of caution and so. We may end up postponing more often if we need, you know, more information or something like that. I'm looking at the at the at the document here. Um it talks about may postpone further consideration of the application to a date certain. Didn't the old ordinance have like sixty days? There were some like period where we were expected to come to a decision, maybe it was on something else, but. Are there, would there be, would there be a deadline for a decision under what we have here?
Uh the uh the courts have basically said you need to act in a reasonable time period. Uh that is not defined. Uh and uh in reality, you simply need to be moving towards a decision. If your decision takes six months because questions arise and issues arise and study is needed. Uh then then that's that's fine. And yes, the old ordinance did have some deadlines. I I can't recall if the special use permit was one of them. Um but uh the the new ordinance does not have any of those timeframes because they're not required by state law.
I was just gonna add, I think the the old ordinance, the sixty days dealt with the site plan, but the old ordinance also used the language of within a reasonable amount of time for special uses.
Okay, alright. So 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 if we had uh. Specific questions for additional information, then we're waiting until that's supplied and so as long as the. Uh you know. A quarter or other observers would look at that and say, you're not just shelving it, you're not just dawdling and that sort of thing. Alright. Other other comments or questions from people? God, Commissioner Thering?
I I guess my feeling is always leave the the uh decisions in the hands of the most experienced. The ones that are neck deep in it. Um if I had to choose, I guess I would choose to accept this language and I'm on the board of trustees. Um so, you know, I have to double-edged sword for me, but. Um. We are essentially the experts and have the ability to. Do whatever it is we feel we need to do. Um not that the board doesn't, but. I just, I guess that's just how I feel.
But since you're on both groups, are you both an expert and a non-expert?
Well, pretty much. Sometimes, yeah, sometimes, no, I guess. I I'm definitely not an expert. Uh it's always a great learning experience, listen to all of you talk, so. Um I hope become much better um as time goes. I had there a few months and then I was off for a few months. And I can tell you that when things would come across our, come across, you know, I would always do my best to watch your, the the the. Go back and watch the meetings. I didn't always do that. But um having been a part of it and to see all the things that you do and ask and and the different questions with the experience that get asked. Um. I don't know that the, although the board of trustees is more than qualified, I think it's it's um. You represent better. I would definitely call you the experts and and your decision, I would. As as you can see, we we support.
Okay, well, my, thanks for the comments. My my thing was just a lame play on words that I couldn't resist. It wasn't it wasn't called to defend yourself.
Oh, good.
Alright. Other other comments from people? So I guess I'm, I I was kind of. Out there on my own and I I guess I'm somewhat comforted by the discussion. Let the record show that I'm not in a, you know, in the midst of some sort of power grab. Uh Commissioner Buckley?
Yeah, I do want to make sure everybody, if they have an opinion, they get a chance. I I I I think I uh. Tend to echo Commissioner Thering's um comments. Um I I. Uh regarding, I think the planning commission, I I do think that they. Have the best insight into kind of hashing it out. Um you know, kind of in regards to your comments about the idea of there being most more postponements. Um I mean, I personally, I I don't have much concern with the postponements. In fact, I I I think there are times when. It it would even be beneficial to our decision-making because it. If we do know that we're the final say on this process and that we're not necessarily punting. On a particular issue because it's ten o'clock at night and we gotta, we give up. Um it does give us maybe a little bit more. Or maybe the final nudge of investment in saying, hey, listen, we we really aren't solid on this. Let's postpone for a month and see if we can, you know, get more input from the um applicant or request some information from. Uh township staff or that sort of thing. So to me, I think it gives the planning commission an opportunity to. More fully own the issue and or the recommendation they're making because. Um it it rests entirely in our hands, so I'm. Uh and I I wouldn't say I have a strong opinion, but I I'm certainly supportive of. Of of making the change. If we don't, I think we can continue to operate within the system we have. I don't think it's necessarily broken, but. I'd be supportive of a change.
Other comments? Anyone else? Anyone who hasn't spoken wanna? Uh Commissioner Lap?
Um my questions initially were because I had uh the same question about accountability that Commissioner Squidrino uh mentioned. Um but I feel better having heard the variety of explanations and both concerns and support uh that I'm hearing here. Um I think too, uh my concern, I guess an initial read was thinking sort of. Like the power grab, that it's everything, but it's really just limited to the special use permits too, uh which again makes sense to me with. Um the discussions and information provided to the planning commission. Um to limit both but to that particular area and um. For that that particular use of the planning commissions as the final say.
And I do like the fact that uh. If the decision rests with the planning commission, the developer has firm feet on the ground at that point. He has a special use permit, he's moving forward. Um uh getting the project going.
Yeah, for routine stuff, there's no question that it's a more expeditious way to do it. Any other comments on this? If not, we can, we can open it up to other topics that people have, other other. Portions of the document.
I'm just curious, when we, when we, this is a large piece of of the language that we're talking about. What is our ultimate action here? Are we are are we gonna take a vote on? Is there a vote that's gonna be required for us to um, you know, recommend the implementation of this? Is it, is it? I don't think it's necessarily piecemeal, but are we? Um we have some other sections, obviously, to talk about. Is that we're kind of addressing this at the end as kind of all of it? Or we are we parting out pieces that we like or don't like? How does it, what does that look like?
Also, so um. The 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 vote, if any, that we take this evening would be to. To authorize or recommend the setting of the date of a public hearing. So we're not approving it. My understanding is we conduct the public hearing first and then. At some point, we would approve uh or, yeah, approve recommending that all these changes to the board. Um I think at this point, we're still, you know, voicing concern, like, for example, with this last topic. If a majority of people had uh had had. Uh misgivings about that change, then, you know, someone could have made a motion to say, you know, I I move that. That be struck and that we revert back to the original language and if that carried, then we would do that. So. We want, we want the document that goes to the public hearing to be the one that we think we're pretty much happy with. I think it can still be changed at that point. I mean, if somebody raises an issue that's a big issue. Um you know, we haven't approved anything yet, but you you want to have it to the point where you've hopefully gotten most of the kinks out of it.
Okay, thanks, Phil. I I I want to make sure everybody has had a chance to comment on this day. Uh in in the other section, I did have a couple of little questions that noted so far. Know if we're ready to move on or not yet.
I think so. I'm not seeing anyone else that wants to speak about that particular issue.
Um well, I guess if we're kind of jumping around, I was kind of just curious about a couple of things in uh. I'm looking for the. Specific section here, um amendments to section two point two and the reference to. Um. The food truck court and the motor vehicle filling station. Um the food truck court, I don't think it's an issue. I just figured I'd raise the point, um but it talks about. Um a permanent site for three or more trucks. Um is there any confusion or ambiguity that's created in in saying? I I'm assuming what we're saying is, well, if we're gonna create a permanent food truck court, then it has to be able to accommodate at least three trucks. And I guess I'm just kind of curious is, is the way that it's worded ambiguous to anybody or is that, does that feel straightforward? And then the other one was under the motor vehicle filling station and. Um it, the sentence specifically, the term may also incorporate a convenience store operation as an accessory use. Provided it is clearly incidental to the filling station use. That does seem incidental to me, like. It's kind of like saying, well, are you a restaurant or a bar and? Um you know, a restaurant is gotta serve an X percentage of food versus liquor sales, that sort of thing. What how how do we define what is incidental or not? I guess I'm curious.
One thing, one thing I will say is that that any property can have, a commercial property can have more than one principal use on it. So, for example, the Chris Doyle uh had a filling station. It also had a convenience store. Uh and uh, you know, so it it. You know, it, the the convenience store was not a necessary use in that, it's the case. It was not incidental to the filling station. It was its. As they were very proud of, it was its own thing and essentially grocery stores, so as far as they were concerned. Uh, so what this this definition is essentially saying is that if you're only operating a filling station. Yes, you could have a a small convenience store at the same place where people come in and pay for the gas. You know, yeah, so uh, this isn't thinking of the, it's a little older style, but you know, the older, the like an old Clark gas station where there was literally a. You know, a two hundred square foot uh, you know, box that the that the uh, the guy sat in and you came up and. And you 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 pay, you bought your candy bar and you pay for your gas and there's not much more to it. Uh, that's really what that's referring to, in the same way that it talks about no auto repairs shall be permitted. Well, you know, you could have a filling station that also has as a second principal use, you know, an auto repair facility. Uh, so the this is the definition here is really only looking at if you strictly were trying to have a a gas station. Uh, filling station only that it that that this this element applies uh to it.
Okay, and and I apologize Rodney, I'm still a little bit confused. So we're saying. That you can have a have an accessory use and it can be. Potentially a convenience store or it could potentially be repairs if it was a accessory use?
Not, no, no, repairs, no, on this one, it's.
Repairs, no, okay, all right. Is it necessary then? I mean, could we? Uh, I know I'm being nitpicky, but like. Because I feel like it creates some ambiguity and I remember, I know what you're talking about, the smaller stores are like, yeah, it's just. Maybe selling cigarettes and some snack foods or something like that, but generally speaking, it's all out, you know, you're just filling for gas. Is it necessary to have to even mention? They can, the uh convenience store. As an accessory use, given that most guests, I don't know if they even open gas stations anymore that aren't selling some level of convenience products.
Or is that actually, well, I I don't object to deleting the second sentence. It is not, it is not uh. Uh, essential to the definition of filling station. And certainly there are filling stations that are literally only filling stations and the and this is particularly true in that. That we're, one of the things that we're proposing here is to allow. Uh, farm equipment, agricultural, you know, filling station essentially in the agricultural district. Um, and that would, you know, that would be strictly for farm equipment, conceivably would not have any other activities associated with it. Cause there are no, you know, no other commercial activities allowed. So I I would have no objection to deleting that that last sentence if that's what the point.
Yeah, I I don't have strong feelings on it. I just figured I'd raise the issue to the planning commission, see if anybody else was. Found it ambiguous or anything, but I I don't have strong feelings.
Is it defined anywhere else and you can have a convenience store and a filling station?
Uh, well, it's simply in the in the commercial district, the convenience store is one of the principal activities that's allowed in any, any business district. Yeah, so it's it's covered that way that you can have more than one principal activity on a property.
Okay, so then. I'm in favor of removing that also.
So, um, I'm looking at these now. Motor vehicle filling station is a special use in before B five, B seven and ag. And convenience store is a. What's P permitted use?
Right.
In before B five, B seven, but not ag. So apparently you can have the little gas station, just gas station in ag, but not. The, not the convenience store, is that right?
That's right, and if you if you look in the in the uh section reference, there's section six point one eight. Uh, there's a reference in there uh noting that in the ag district, it, the filling station can only be used for agricultural equipment. It's not a general use filling station.
Oh, really? That's interesting.
It's not, it's not something we expect to to see, but it it does occasionally come up if you have enough. Folks that have enough equipment uh to warrant one, uh, somebody will say, you know what, we should put one, put. Play a central place in where we can all fill up. Typically, far, a large farmers would have their own tank. And that's how they solve the problem. They simply have, you know. Two hundred fifty or whatever gallon, under five hundred gallon above ground fuel tank for diesel, whatever they, whatever they need. But uh, as I said, if you have enough uh folks all wanting the same thing, then. Setting up a central location for that can be, it can be possible.
Yeah, I mean, of course, there aren't too many gas stations out in the country, but there's a few. And I don't know what the zoning is of those of those locations, but I doubt there. You know, I doubt there'd be four, B five or B seven, so. I don't know. I don't have a big problem with the language as it is, but. We can, I guess, figure it out.
There's that one convenience store out on twenty in Coldwater that is convenience store with one gas pump. How would that fit in?
Well, that's a still a business use, is it be, it's, I'm sure it's in the business district over there.
You don't see those anymore.
Yeah, so back in the day, that was once common.
I'm just wondering if we can go down this list kind of in order instead of jumping around, it'd be easier to stay on task.
Okay, well, that was my question upfront, but.
Right.
And I don't have a problem either way, so let's uh. Okay, so. I guess, does anybody have any other issues in part two? Pages one and two, so the definition, the amendments to section two point two definitions. What was uh, what was Ryan, what was your final verdict on motor vehicle filling station? Are you, are you concerned or you just? With leaving that uh accessory use language in there?
I I mean, I I, given that it's um something, I I mean, I get that the agricultural district that is. Not necessarily, it's not permitted, but I mean. I think it would be cleaner language. If we simply removed it because it's a use that um, if somebody is creating one and it's it's already permitted anyway. Think it'd be cleaner language to to not have that reference. Obviously, it makes sense to talk about the auto repairs not being committed. But it's not, again, it's it's not such a big deal that it's. Harmful to keep it in either, it's um, probably just be a little cleaner if we cut it, so again, no strong feelings.
But wouldn't, so I want to make sure I understand, so if you have a. A a motor vehicle filling station that's in an ag district. Rodney, did you say that there's language somewhere else that says that that cannot serve like typical passenger cars?
That that is correct, yeah, the the uh, the reference uh, the the section and reference uh, section six point one eight. Uh, when we get to, when we get to that, because there's an, there are things from amendments to that. You'll see that there's language in there that says that in an agricultural area. Uh, that the filling station is limited to farm equipment, agricultural equipment.
Okay, okay. So they'll, they'll just have to know to bring their own Gatorade or pop or whatever, they won't be able to get it there.
So it sounds like the consensus is to uh to take out that last sentence and. All right, we'll plan on that.
Should it still say something about auto repairs not being permitted or?
I I assume that that it would can keep the reference to auto repairs. But my thought was is that simply because it opens it up to questions, the incidental filling station use. Just that kind of section in there in between the commas is what I was looking to strike.
Okay.
So you're saying you would, you would, you would keep the, the term may also incorporate a convenience store operation as an accessory use. But no auto repairs shall be permitted?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I would be okay with that. So that basically says that the farmer can have their Gatorade. But we don't have to decide whether it's a, an accessory use or not. I kind of like that, it kind of simplifies things. Anything else on any of the other um definitions in amendments to section two point two? Okay, if not, then we have, I mean, part three, it's the amendments to section three point four. This is the big master table with all the Ss and Ps and As, so this is all the. The master, you know, what's allowed where table. Anybody have any concerns about any, it's a lot of items, but. Anybody have any concerns about any of the changes there? Okay, not hearing any. Part four is the documents, the all the 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 tables of the details of all the different zoning districts. So the first one is the ag district. So certain things, a few, a few ones, a few of the permitted uses have been struck. A few uh special uses have been added. Accessory uses have been added. Anything on ag? Any, uh, Commissioner Darren?
So, uh, might be a silly question, but we just started using a. Pet groomer that is mobile. And so, uh, you know, they come set up in your driveway. It's, I'm sure that it's a licensed business. Does it need to be permitted? To go around in Union Township?
Not, not for, you know, no, no more so than a, somebody that came by and mowed your lawn or. Clean the, clean the the furnace or anything like that. No, it's just a service.
Okay, thank you.
The minimum dwelling width is struck out and you have to see six sixteen.
Right, that's because uh, section six point one six is uh, the section that has all the standards that apply to a single family dwelling. And what uh, this was a, in, really an error in the in the document in that, that uh. Six point one six was intended to have all those standards, including the dwelling width. And and so this table was actually in conflict with the language in that other section. And so uh, that we want to uh. To eliminate the conflict by simply putting the reference to the section where all that information's available.
Very good. Any other comments on ag? Next one is R one rural residential. I see we're allowing people to have horses, that's a good thing.
Yes.
So the difference between a private stable and a public stable is if, if the horses are just for your own use, it's private, but if you. Have give lessons or have anyone come in, anyone else come in and pay to to ride the horses, that's public?
Uh, even, even in in some cases, if giving lessons, you you'd probably still be private. If 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 it is a principal business. Uh, you're, essentially the general public can simply come in and get lessons, then it would be a public stable. If uh, you know, if if you have a horse and invite a friend over or you know, or even. You know, if if somebody comes over and rides your horse, you know, once a week just to have a lesson. That's not, that still would be considered private, just as, for example, boarding horses would still be under that private category. Uh, so the the, there's a lot, it it takes a lot to get to the public and it's really, is the general public invited onto your property? Are the general public invited under your property? In that case, it's public.
Okay.
So is it delineation there? Um, a question of whether you're being compensated for to for that or?
No, because as I said, if you're boarding horses, you're obviously doing it for for revenue. Um, and even less than, lessons, uh, you know, you, as I said, you, somebody can pay you for a lesson on your own horse. Uh, the the, really, the dividing line is is the general public uh invited in. And and at that point, then the more rigorous standards come into play, because obviously, if you're inviting the general public in. You need to be, have a facility designed for that.
So if it's a talking horse and you're inviting the public in to listen to it talk, but. It turns out it really only talks to Wilbur, so they don't get to hear it anyway, but that would make it a public stable, probably.
I am not answering that question. I refuse to answer that one.
I'm 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 revealing my age, cause I grew up watching reruns of Mr. Ed, so. Mike, is that a new hand or an old hand?
Old hand, sorry.
Yeah, no problem.
Actually, what I will say.
A lot of us are old hands at this point.
Yeah, the, what they all say about the stables is that's actually a case where. Uh, there was a conflict between the big table, which did have them allowed in the, in the R one district and then this. This uh, section three point seven where they weren't listed, so this was just one of those catches where we're adding in here. Um, so that everything's, everything matches.
Okay, anything else on R one? Next one is R two A, one and two family low density residential. No mobile or modular dwellings.
Now, that that is also, that's a typo, that was supposed to be, have been deleted. Uh, we we do allow mobile or modular dwellings outside of a mobile home park, we just allow them as as any other single family home. It just have to be the exact same standards as any other home.
Okay. Anything else on R two A? Next one is R two B, one and two family medium density residential. Looks like the same changes as in R two A. R three A, multi-family, multiple family residential.
What is the um, what is the difference between a home for the aged and um independent living for seniors?
That that is a good question, as some of this is is uh, the types of licensing that are required or. Or in some cases not required. And uh, home for the aged, I I believe is one that essentially can be operated without a state license. And it's, you're just basically this. Place for elderly people to live. Uh, you know, it's not a dependent care facility or assisted living facility that have their own licensing requirements.
I see.
That seems odd that you'd be able to do that without any licensing.
It 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 does, um, there are challenges with within that, that that sphere, yes.
So that term, that term home for the aged is 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 still like a term of art, I mean, it it's a an understood term in the. In the, in the world out there.
Yes.
Okay. Anything else on R three A? R three B, medium density, multiple family residential. Again, basically the same. I guess I'll just ask, what was the? What's the rationale for deleting or similar organization from fraternity or sorority? What's the rationale for deleting or similar organization from fraternity or sorority?
Standardizing the language, the, the, the term in the table, the term in the, in definitions is, is fraternity or sorority. And so we're just wanting to make sure it's standard language throughout the document. It doesn't change anything. It, that's, those are, it's still the exact same type of, of use. It's just making sure the language is the same.
Okay. Just makes me wonder what other organizations. I mean, this, this was, was this just language that came from, from Chris Duzen, Duzen that was in our document that we just approved and that was there and it just doesn't seem like it is necessary?
I think the old ordinance, Peter, didn't the old ordinance regulate fraternities and sororities as well?
I'm trying to remember. The issue never really came up except for one time I can remember, so I'm not familiar if it actually did or didn't.
Yeah, I remember we, we had one down on Crawford, I think.
Yeah.
Okay. I was just, again, I was wondering what the or similar organization would be, but I'm not too concerned about it.
Yeah.
All right. Now we move to the, to the busier ones, the business district, so B four. And before. B five.
Sorry, back on B four, the minimum setbacks are getting narrower.
Yeah, you'll, you'll see that the, as, as we talked about earlier on in the process, we looked at standardizing the setbacks in the business districts and industrial districts. And, and also to try to, to allow buildings to be generally closer to the front lot line. You know, allow a building to be more prominently placed on a lot if, if, if that, that choice is made. Right now, I think it's a B seven district has only a fifteen foot front setback, while the others have these much wider front setbacks. And so in looking at our ordinance, we, we settled on a twenty foot front setback because that coordinates with our landscaping requirements. So it all fits together that way, but it allows, basically brings, brings facilities closer to the road in, in all three of the business districts.
Rodney, is the attention, intention of that, in addition to, I guess, consistency, is that is the intention there to allow them to become closer to the road is to make it closer to the sidewalk and make them easier access of use and stuff like that when, if it's a pedestrian thoroughfare as well?
That, that is the case, absolutely. That is a very important element. It also interestingly has the effect of potentially slowing down traffic speeds. Because drivers, when, 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 when they have, they have walls essentially, when, when it feels like the quarter is narrower, they tend to drive slower. And so having the buildings closer to the, to the road will help potentially to, to slow down the speeds along, you know, the busy roads like Bluegrass and M twenty and such.
Okay.
Those are, those are minimum setbacks.
That is correct. Yes, somebody, a business still could be set back further if they choose. It's a topic that, that, that might be something we want to talk about down the road. There are some communities that actually set a maximum setback in the business district so that they create more of a uniform pattern. Typically, I would recommend that we look at that through a master plan update first, to kind of look at from a policy point of view. And then from there, build an ordinance that change that goes along with it.
Did the city, do I recall the city implementing some sort of maximum setback as well, or did I dream that?
I, I believe they did, yes. Yeah, the city ordinance, it really focuses on trying to create that, that kind of, you know, front wall format.
Okay.
Yeah. It's tough, though, when you have a built community because you have to do it through, you know, when a building gets torn down and replaced with something else, the existing buildings, I'm assuming are grandfathered in unless they get substantially remodeled or, or replaced.
That, that is the case. The interesting thing about the, the business community is that if you, if, if we were to implement that, let's say we were implement, you know, buildings need to be built up to the edge of the right of way or at a twenty foot setback, whatever that number is we decide. It actually creates an opportunity for existing businesses that may be looking at remodeling. And all of a sudden, they have a whole, a whole additional area to expand into that they made, that they couldn't have done when, of course, when the, when the building was built. And so they can create a whole new front on their building. You know, essentially look like a new building, new, new facility, even though the back may be the older, older building. So it creates opportunities for, for new development, creates opportunities for new, new, you know, improved appearance to older sites.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And of course, a lot of the, a lot of the places are, they're the places with the massive parking lots are, are starting to fill them in with other businesses to the front, on the front edge. In the township, we have the Aspen Dental. There's that new building that appeared all of a sudden in ABC's parking lot. And that's in the city, but similar idea. All right. Um, so that's before B five. B five is, looks like very similar changes compared to before. Similar with the setbacks as well as the items that are being introduced. B seven is relatively similar as well. A few differences. Anything on any of the Bs? The next ones are the Is, industrial. I one is light industrial. And I two is general industrial. They're relatively similar again. Not identical, but similar lists of, of changes.
Where did we, did we move the, the bulk storage is removed from the special use and the light industrial? It's not, it wasn't moved to the principal committed uses. Is that, does that move to I two?
No, it's, it's actually an out of date term. So we're deleting it. We have outdoor storage general. We have various types of specific outdoor storage.
Okay.
And then we have warehousing. So the bulk storage was just, it was a term that should not have been left in the ordinance.
Okay. All right, thanks.
I think we must have had this discussion at some point, but the building heights are increased fairly substantially. That was, that's just a, a general, like, this is a good thing to be doing in these types of areas type of idea or?
Well, in the, in, in the business district, so we proposed to, to add a little bit additional height in large part to make the most efficient use of those properties. To encourage things like mixed use buildings where we could have residences above commercial. That same thing here in the industrial. Here we have the case where industrial today tends to the high bay free span building is the, is the, is the main desire for any industrial operation. And every time I, I asked the economic development experts, they, they give me a height, a free interior height that's higher than I, than I, it used to be when I expected, when I talked to them about those things. So companies are looking for those high heights, be able to move equipment around inside to be able to stack higher if they need, create mezzanines, whatever, various purposes. So in our industrial districts are fairly small. And to make the most efficient use of those spaces, we propose to add a little bit more height limit there to, to give flexibility in constructing those buildings to fit modern needs.
Okay. Yeah, I noticed both the, the height of the building and also the, the allowed lot coverage. So kind of a denser, more efficient use of the space. That's fine.
Now that our buildings, taller buildings also give them off as a fire department and greater chances of using their ladder truck.
Is that, is that a return on investment argument or, or we get to climb a ladder?
There's, there's always the, the ongoing question, you know, based on building heights, you're required to keep a ladder truck if you have buildings over a certain height, but for some communities, you have one or two buildings like that. So you have a ladder truck that kind of rots in the barn for twenty years and then you got to replace it. So more tall buildings means more opportunity to use your truck.
That's right.
Now that I'm looking back at it, now that you pointed it out to me, the maximum building height for B five and B seven, it was increased from thirty five to forty five, but for B four, it's not. Was that deliberate?
That, that was, the B four tends to be closer to the, the fringes as, as things are laid out. And so it, it's really kind of the least. Yeah, anyway, the idea of having, having more activity kind of in the, in the more concentrated areas in the B five, B seven, B four, B four on the, on the fringe near to the residential agricultural areas, having a lower height there seemed to make good sense.
Okay. And if, and if a business, let's pick one. Would be a good one. Well, mixed use building, if a mixed use building wanted to be, if they wanted to build a mixed use building in B four and they had their heart set on forty feet, they would seek a variance?
I, I think that they would probably need to seek a different piece of property, frankly, or they, they consider, seek a rezoning, I suppose, to the B five. Certainly that could be appropriate in some cases. But also frankly, the, the Denham Broome Field is, it met the thirty five foot height requirement, so it yeah, so, because that's what the current requirement is. That's what they had to come in under. So it's certainly possible to build a mixed use building within the thirty five feet. It just is not, it, it's going to be a little shorter, not quite a, one floor less, most likely.
Okay. Anybody have anything else on the, on the industrial district? And then I think the last one is everyone's favorite OS. The one without a number. I guess ag doesn't have numbers either, so. Anything on office service? Seeing and hearing none. Next one is amendments to section four point two. Schedule of regulations. So this is that table or a table, just, I guess this table just summarizes the the various dimensional requirements of the different zoning. Locations. Amendments to section four point three. Commissioner Thayer.
On J and K, is that supposed to be side and rear yard?
It certainly is, yes. Thank you.
Good catch.
That looks like some kind of an automated correction.
Do you think that happened in the preparation of this document or do you think it's, it's that way in the, in the actual?
Or, let, let me see, actually, because I'm curious now.
Yeah, it's year.
Yep.
It was the year.
Yeah. And that, that happens, you know, no matter how hard you try, no matter how many times you look at it, there's going to be a typo somewhere.
Yeah.
All right, I did my part. Found something.
Anything else on that section? Okay, the next one is part seven, amendments to section six point one eight. Filling stations. Okay, this is where the limitation on the filling station in the ag district occurs. In C of that section, the fifty feet. So it applies to residentially zoned property, but it also applies to any existing residential structure, whether it sits on a residentially zoned lot or not. Is that the idea?
That's correct. And that, that is the language of the, of the current ordinance. You can see in the, in the, the red line portion below it. We're actually shortening it up. Right now it says one hundred feet. But that's, that one hundred feet is actually measured to the adjacent residence. So it, it includes land that's on the, on the residential lot. What we've done here is standardized it simply to the, to the lot boundary and make it fifty feet, which is-
Okay.
Yep.
We have anything on that one? Next one is amendments to section six point one nine, home occupations, home limited, home based limited businesses.
This is another fairly big change. This is one where, where on the home occupation side, we would proposing to move that to an administrative process. You would still see the more intensive home based limited business side. This is where they have outside employees. It's a primary difference. I think the home base limited business standard also gives them a little bit more area to, to occupy for the business activity. But it would, it would make a home occupation permit, an administrative permit.
Okay. So if a person is going to run, is going to conduct a business out of their home, but they're not going to employ anyone and they're not going to can they, they, they can't do like retail sales, right? With people coming to the house. With people coming to the house to actually buy a product and take it away.
Right, there there's certainly, yeah, there's strict limits on those elements. I'm thinking of the explosive cake. Confectionery that that we had before us. That operation was one where they were not going to have any outside employees. That that would have been under if this is approved, that would have been an administrative process to approve that facility. Rather than them having to come to you for an approval.
Yeah.
Still my favorite business name.
Any any other comments on that one?
The other item I see here, item C, I I just realized here that's not highlighted as new text. And it should be, that's.
You're talking about the the medical marijuana?
Medical marijuana. Yeah, yeah, we are proposing to add medical marijuana caregiver as a home type of home occupation. So. This is based based on court decisions that. That have now said that that local governments do have say over where home where where caregivers can be located. And and so under that circumstance, it becomes a lawful lane use that we have to deal with in our ordinance. The the court case that that received favorable attention from the Michigan Supreme Court was for a home occupation format. And so we're proposing to use that format. And you'll you'll see standards later on for for what they have to follow, but it would be an administrative permit, and that's also consistent with the the two thousand eight. Motor approved law, which had some privacy restrictions on it that we we can't really require a special use permit for that. Without being inconsistent with those private privacy restrictions.
So that whole paragraph should should be in blue and underline then.
That's correct. So yeah, well, we will correct that.
Anything on section six point one nine? Next one is part nine, section six point two two.
This is the 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 back end of the of the changes you saw earlier in the menu's table. Where we're proposing to to add what I refer to as employment center activities. Warehouse light, the ordinance calls light manufacturing, research and development. And distribution centers allowing those in the business districts as a special use. Particularly specifically in the B five and the B seven. And largely, as I think I wrote my 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 summary, this is because we don't have enough industrial land and. But we do have an overabundance of commercially zone property, and there are certain properties. That that could be used for some of these activities without impacting our business district or impacting the. The the residences that may be around it. And so it seemed like a good fit to 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 expand the. The business districts of B five, B seven to allow some of these activities. It also make will allow, for example, for better use of the the Westwood Acres Chuck McGurk's facility on Remus Road, which. He he stretches as far as he can what what's allowed in the B five. But his building is very well suited to do things like warehousing or do things like. Research and development facility that's not currently allowed in the B five. So it would make better use of properties like that and allow for better use of our land. So thi- this is the back end of that that basically gives you criteria when especially use is before you. To consider as part of that special use permit to look at whether or not that that those activities would be appropriate at a particular location.
And the term employment center is already defined in our definitions.
You know, I don't believe it is actually. I we can we can add one for that. There it was just I I need to put a title on it. You know, I do want to have a title that, you know, that had that long list of activities there.
But I mean, we'll we'll need to know, we'll need to know when we're when we're using these and when we're not. So I think some definition of what. What constitutes an employment center? I mean, would it, you know, is it? Is it number of employees? Is it types of? I know you give some examples. In the in the first in the in A there, but I don't know. I guess I think it should be probably should be in the definition.
I will add a definition for that for that.
Other comments on six twenty two?
I actually like that it gives us some discretion. To add some expectations or requirements in order to kind of. Fit some of the standards of the of the zoning district.
Then it's part ten, and that's amendments to section six point three one. This is dealing with outdoor storage. Specifying the enclosure and then. Access for use standards. Hearing none. Part eleven amendments to section six point thirty four. You're adding a new subsection additional setbacks.
You'll see the title there, we're deleting a couple of sections that that were creating conflicts. With with the relevancy ordinance. So this just trying to to clean that language up.
Next one is amendments to section six point thirty seven. Just noting that the. Design has to conform to section six sixteen. Next is part thirteen amendments to section six point thirty eight self storage warehouses. Recreational vehicle storage. Any issues with that that people have?
Just curious where we where we draw the line between. We we use the word incidental incidental in character subordinate to the principal use of the site. Where do we draw the official line between now, right? Well, we have. You know, if we use the self storage facility. On Lincoln and twenty, where do we draw the line between? Oh, there's a couple of boats or other recreational vehicles out there that are there for storage and. I guess one constitutes too much.
That is a good question. And and then that is that's. That's where you earn your your per diem, quite frankly. It is your judgment call to make in that circumstance if an item is coming before you. We we try as much as we can to use objective language and to be specific, but it's just simply not possible in some cases. And so that's where you see language like accessory and incidental and subordinate. To to try to give direction, but nonetheless ultimately would be your judgment call.
So would this be would this particular language be used in accordance with new self new self storage facilities or would? If like, for instance, the same facility or any other existing self storage, if they wanted to to. Begin storing recreational vehicles, are they going to come before us? To have that approved in some fashion or or is or does this essentially permit them to just simply start doing it?
If they don't have, if they don't have a recreational vehicle storage yard as part of their operation that was not approved on the site plan. Then they would need to have a site plan for to allow for them.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Other comments on this section? The next one is part fourteen. I gather that it was just a deletion.
Right, it was a conflict. And so, yes, we're just deleting. It was it was unnecessary. They referred to, I think it was required a special use permit approval for all auction facilities. The ordinance didn't actually require a special use permit for all auction facilities. So it's conflict between this and the land use table.
Okay. Part fifteen amendments to section six point forty seven indoor commercial recreation uses. It's hereby deleted and replaced in its entirety with a new six point forty seven outdoor seating area.
This is a section that that Peter knows well, because it's come up on a couple of projects in the past. Where the where the where the question is, what is an indoor commercial recreation versus a health club? Versus, you know, gymnastics facility or organs had all these different terms. That that were even even listed, I believe, in different zoning districts. And so as part of this ordinance, we were. Cleaning that up and standardizing that language and and eliminated this 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 additional setback here, this one hundred foot setback. That applied only to the one type of recreation facility and not to the others. It really had no value. There's no reason if it's all an indoor indoor recreation. The impacts are no different than if it was a retail store or gymnastics or whatever. If it's inside, it's inside. And so there was no no reason to have a separate hundred foot setback for for that. And it's so. As part of that, we're simply reusing that that section for a different purpose now. It's it kind of fit in terms of this structure of section six to to put the outdoor seating area there.
Yeah, so this this the new section six four and forty seven has nothing to do with the old one. It's just. That was since you were eliminating, it was a convenient place to put it.
Right.
All right. Anybody have anything on the new six forty seven outdoor seating area?
I is the reason that we're not mentioning anything about alcohol consumption. Is that because that? The state law was changed here last year or something that essentially enabled that. With appropriate outdoor season or with appropriate outdoor c seating. Would alcohol consumption be just be covered by state state law and. The restrictions on there is specific liquor license or that sort of thing?
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
Anything else on that one? Okay, part sixteen, a new section six point five two daycare centers.
Why do we have a fence that's fifty four inches tall? Instead of forty eight, which is commercially available fence?
That's a good question. I I think I I don't know the 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 exact genesis of this particular number. The the certainly from a practical standpoint, a four foot fence is pretty easily climbed. But I I don't have an objection. If you want to make it forty eight in in standardized, that's fine. The the language is at least so it would still allow, you know, a potential. Facility to choose to have a higher fence if they wished.
I would just hate to have somebody put in seventy two inch fence because they can't buy fifty four.
Right. So I I don't have an objection to to change it to forty eight for that purpose.
Anyone have an objection? I mean, it already specifies non climbable. So even if it's a little shorter. And I'm assuming we're talking about kids, most of whom would be less than forty eight inches tall. I don't know. I'm not really up on my kid heights, but. All right. So, yeah, let's go ahead and make that change. Anything else on six fifty two? Okay, next is part seventeen. This is a new section six fifty three food trucks.
I know we don't have much in the way of gravel lots, but is there a reason why? Food truck has to be located on a paved parking lot as opposed to. Any other type of service?
Now, this is this is related to barrier free access that. Unpaved lot, the conceivably, even though there might not be a handicap parking space next door to the food truck. At the very least, somebody that that does have disabilities could, you know, paved lot allows them to more easily. Access that truck, just like they can access any other commercial facility. And I'm thinking of one particular lot. Actually, it's a lot that where the Chris filling station is is planning to go where.
That's what I was thinking about, yeah.
Where I quite frankly, this, if we have this, would encourage them to pave that lot and clean that up a little bit if if it was going to stay. So, you know, it's part partly to make sure things actually get, you know, are nicer looking improved. But but largely, and the main reason for it was a barrier for accessibility.
Okay.
Now there's zoning permit. Valid for one year. Is that anywhere in the township they want to park?
This is particular to a specific site. So this is this would be a zoning permit for a specific site. Peter, Peter, what what because we've been working with a couple of food trucks that that are over at. The Menards and Sam's Club, if I recall, but what did we charge them for the permit? We basically treat him as a temporary use. So this would replace that kind of ad hoc temporary use language with language that's more specific to their needs. What what do we charge for the permit for the food truck?
I think it was only like twenty five dollars.
Yeah, I think I think you're right, yeah.
So they would just get a permit from Menards law. Permit for wherever Dick's Sporting Goods lot.
Exactly, yeah.
So part B, the part on the food truck court. First of all, I think in the first sentence, customer customers should be plural.
Thank you.
But I guess I read this through and it sounds to me like. You're wanting something something permanent with concrete and and, you know, something something permanent. So, for example, when it says permanent onsite bathroom and hand washing facilities. That up. A porta potty is not is not permanent. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay.
This is it come up. We've actually had interest in this. You know, developer interested in in putting a facility together along this line. There there are some places around the state where where this kind of a. Development has taken place, but as I said, we have a developer in town that has expressed interest in it.
Okay, and so if this facility were built, there'd be like bay. Okay, and so if this facility were built, there'd be like bays or spots. And, you know, the somebody would own this and they would rent it out to the trucks and. They would come and park and leave and come back and so on.
Exactly.
Or else would they be able to leave their trucks in place for a season? Is that how those things work?
They would, yeah, if the facility allowed it, yes, absolutely. They can rent it for the season.
Mr. Albrecht.
Just had a quick question on the the food truck temporary use. So. When you when you made reference to like Home Depot or Dick's or something like that. Now, with that twenty five dollars, is that a one time, like one day only, or? Or is that as many times as you want to go set up shop there that works?
The twenty five dollars is for six months.
Under the current temporary use provision, that's that's the format. Under this, we would, it would. But it's good for the current calendar year, so it could go longer than six months if they got the permit early.
And I guess the reason I'm asking is, you know, like with the uniqueness of. Like gatherings in terms of like open houses and just the uniqueness of people having random stuff. You know, I was at one where they had a food truck. How does that work for a family to have a food truck for a? One day occasion? Is that possible? Obviously.
Yeah, so what I would say is this, that. You know, the earlier question about the pet grooming. You know, the pet grooming truck, it comes on the property, they do their business and they leave. And you know, nobody's going to be, we're not out patrolling the township on Saturday looking for. Somebody that has an open house and and they they happen to have a food truck out front. We're just not looking for it. And and by the time we found it, if we did find it. And and issued a notice of violation, of course, the whole thing will be over and done anyway. So it really, this is really talking about the kind of circumstance like we have with Menards, with Home Depot. Other facilities like that where people are regularly coming, you know, the regular schedule to to be in a certain place at a certain time.
Okay, Commissioner Buckley.
So just to follow up on Commissioner Albrecht's comment. It sounds like what we're saying here then is that, I mean, we don't have a downtown necessarily like Mount Pleasant does. But it sounds like what we're saying here is essentially a food truck has to have permission to set up. Permission and a permit, permission from the landowner and a permit. To to set up in a given location. They couldn't simply pull over. In a parking spot on the side of the road if we had roadside parking and say, yep, I'm going to set up here for the day.
That is correct, yes.
Any other questions or comments on that section? So the next one is part eighteen. This is the new section, an extensive new section on medical marijuana caregivers. So basically what they are, what they're allowed to do, all the all the regulations related to them. So comments and questions on this?
I have, I'm just going to ask it. I have a dumb question, I guess. I'm curious what the distinction is between a medical marijuana caregiver now. And with recreational operations, retail outlets that are available. What is the medical marijuana caregiver, what market or what? Services they're providing that is not readily available just through retail sales?
You know, it's interesting. I'm glad you asked that question. So the caregivers are under the original two thousand eight law. And I thought that they would fade out entirely. When when the newer laws were created, especially the recreational or adult use laws, two thousand eighteen. But they're having a bit of a renaissance and it's it's among people who. Don't like the more corporate framework that the the newer laws are under. The the state of Michigan. There's there's whole regulatory structure of the state of Michigan for the. The the commercial medical marijuana facilities and now these commercial adult use facilities. And interestingly, these folks that are coming under the two thousand eight law. They're not really governed by that in the same way. They they all those all those regulations are tied to those newer laws. And not to the two thousand eight act. And so what we're seeing is it might say kind of a more bohemian element that says we want to have our. You know, fewer restrictions on us. They they are coming back to this this caregiver element. Now, the caregiver has some significant restrictions. They're not supposed to make a profit. Do they? I'm sure they do, but but they're not supposed to. And there's pretty severe limitations on. On how much they can grow and to whom they can sell it or give it or whatever they do with it. But nonetheless, there there seems to be an interest growing, again, interest in this kind of a framework. We have had one person that I spoke to that that's very much interested in this this provision. And would probably establish a facility if we if we were to approve it. And I'm sure there are others I haven't heard from.
Yeah, it's interesting.
Other comments or questions on this? Next item is part nineteen amendments to section seven point five. Accessory buildings, accessory structures. The next one is a new section. Part twenty, section seven point twenty. This is the one on building form and composition, which I think is in part. Township staffs attempt to give us a little more guidance on. You know, making connections between the zoning ordinance and the master plan in terms of. What our buildings would end up looking like, things like facades and those sorts of things. Any comments or questions on this?
Their number two composition. Says sides, rear, facades, include building materials, architectural features similar to those presence on front facade of a building. That seems very expensive to me. For a developer to. Put the same brick features he's going to put on the backside of his building and the side of his building that he does on the front.
There's two kinds of commercial development. There's the 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 old west. Facade, you know, where where they had that beautiful front wall, but behind it was a log cabin. And then and then there's the kind of the more integrated design. If you look at downtown Mount Pleasant, of course, you see it, the commercial buildings, they use the same materials on all all sides and the older ones. But but really, what we're looking at here is not, we don't want a facade. We don't want a false front. What we want is something that that's integrated into the neighborhood. And in most of our commercial areas. The backside is as important as the front. The backside is visible from residences that are around it. Or other businesses that are around it. You know, most of our commercial buildings are visible from more than one side. And so. That that false front facade format. It really doesn't work for the character of our commercial areas. What what this language says is that. Similar, you know, it doesn't say it has to be identical. It says it needs to be similar around all sides. The the intent is to, you know, is to have more integrated integrated design, that's all. Yeah, I think you're going to see that with the Dollar General project that's coming back to you next week. You should be seeing that tomorrow, in fact, when when the packets are go out. You know, they have, they've taken the advice and suggestions we gave them and have come back with a design that is. More integrated on all four sides, whereas the original design was very much that false front facade. And kind of cheap around the sides of rear, so. Yeah, that's that's the intent, really, is like I said, to be more integrated into the neighborhood. It's not to require all four sides to be brick, you know, it's to require all four sides to be similar in character.
Is it your assumption that if a building were situated in such a way that that one or more sides? Were were. Blocked by either other buildings or we're going to be significantly screened from. Other viewers that that we would we would have. I mean, I think we already do, but we would have the flexibility to be to be less picky about something like that than. You know, if if the if the side is clearly, if it's like a corner lot where the sides are clearly visible. To passersby, that's one thing, but if it's if it's sandwiched between a couple buildings. And there isn't that much going on in the back, that that's a different situation.
I think that this gives you the ability to look at that and make that kind of a judgment call. Yes, absolutely.
Other comments? I like that it includes the the rooftop screening, since that seems to be a. It's been an issue with at least some of the projects that have come to us recently. So it lays it out pretty clearly. What what is being sought? Other comments on this section? Part twenty one amendments to section nine point two. This is the parking. The tables themselves are.
The table, the table that you have here is new. We would have had to literally make it all blue underline text, which.
That was the idea.
Yeah, it would just became too much to try to read for readability, but it is basically entirely new. In the current ordinance, there are several tables and they're not coordinated with the land use table. Some of the some of the 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 land use titles are different. And the the format is is different, so we want to create one table that was directly coordinated back to the land use table. Using the exact same language. And then the other thing with that that we found in working with this ordinance. Although the the request had been to reduce the minimum, reduce the minimum where possible. And that was done in some cases. There were some situations, one that we ran into with the the filling station. And drive drive in drive through restaurant, in particular, the Dunkin' Donuts facility. Where we found that that the current, the new ordinance had a far higher minimum number of parking spaces required for a drive through restaurant. And we had to go through. Some gyrations with that applicant to figure out how we how they could meet the requirement. And not need a variance. They did, they managed it, but it still required quite a bit of parking on that property that that they probably will not ever use. What we did is we went back through all those standards and and took another look at them and and in many cases. Revised revised them downward, so we have a lower lower minimum requirement. These are still numbers that are very reasonable. But but the idea is to not to minimize the the amount of impervious surface, the amount of parking. That has been created, that's never going to be used. It's still it's still a minimum, any applicant can can propose more. But but this, we're essentially lowering the floor a bit more on many of these.
Most of the, well, many of the, yeah, probably, I'll say most, most of the stipulations are. Are integers, one space per X. But there are some that are have these 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 fractional point three nine, point four three. When the calculation is done, is it is it round down or is it always round up or how does that work?
It is typically round up, though with regards to that.
Did you say round up?
Round up, yes.
Okay, so if it comes out to be, pick a number, you know. Twenty one, twenty one point two, that becomes twenty two?
That's right.
Okay, so anything over that number is you need an additional space, okay? Anybody have anything on this on this five page table? Well, it's not one table, but it's. Five pages of tables. Next item, part twenty four, actually make sure I'm not skipping something. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Part twenty two is just a typo, section eleven point three. Part twenty three amendments to section eleven point five.
Just we're moving that to non-conformity science to its own section. You'll see it in the next page.
Okay, yes, creating its own new section. Part twenty four amendments to section eleven point six. Signs for religious institutions, other institutional buildings and public buildings. Commissioner Buckley.
Well, I thought I had a question here, but maybe it's relegated to a different area. This is specifically to religious institutional buildings, public buildings. Rodney, my question was going back to the decision that the ZBZBA had. I don't know, ten years ago when we last met. About our determination of what defines a parcel or what defines a lot. I don't recall with some of the changes we've made, how if we've addressed that.
Yeah, we we did. The new ordinance itself addressed that. Both in terms of updating the definition of a lot and also updating the sign requirements. That variance still still stands, but but. They 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 no longer could pursue that under the new ordinance.
No new ones, and this feeds back into that. Okay, all right, that that makes sense.
Okay, Commissioner Lyle.
Are there guidelines in the zoning ordinance about the electronic display technology in terms of the brightness and things like that?
There is some language in the in the general standards, yes, for for those types of signs.
Other questions and comments on eleven point six? Okay, part twenty five amendments to eleven point eleven, eleven twelve, eleven thirteen. Amended to correct a regulatory conflict. Part twenty six, add a new section eleven point fourteen, non-conforming signs. Which was just referenced a moment ago. Any questions or concerns with the new section on non-conforming signs?
Uh, just maybe a formatting issue with the number three. After B, we have maybe reuse subject of the following.
Thank you.
Go CDE, we might want to do bullets, yeah.
Yeah, thank you very much, yeah. Good catch.
That's, that's one of those, uh, Microsoft Word is gonna do what it thinks it should be doing, issues.
Yeah.
Those things drive me nuts.
But yeah, this is, like I said, this is why we do this, because no matter how many times you read something. You you buzz right by it, and so having fresh eyes on it makes all the difference.
I did have something, Phil.
Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
Um, so, um, you know, if you drive around uh, town and some of our monument signs. They do plenty of landscaping around them and, um. Not always do they maintain the landscaping to where you can really see the sign well. And I don't know if we could put something in the servicing. Area of, you know, because it becomes a safety issue if somebody's slowing down to try and. Read a sign, they could get rear ended or whatever have you, but. Do you, do we think that we need to have something in there for that?
Well, um. I I think it would need to be in the general standards rather than here, because uh, it should apply to all types of signs, I guess.
Right, I'm sorry, yes.
No, but it's okay, yeah, I'm glad you brought it up, the challenge is, is we can't compel people to do it. What they ought to be doing in every case, you know, it's just like if you, if you compel your kids to do everything. And don't give them a chance to to make their own mistakes, then they never learn from them, they don't never learn, and when they grow up, they. I would say have no common sense and do all kinds of crazy things. Yeah, I I would hate to be in a position of of regulating the height of vegetation around a sign, I just.
Yeah, but it's it's a, not regulating the height, but it's the maintenance of it, but I I do get your point.
I I think we'd have, we need more staff to be able to be able to to regulate that. Because there are certainly other cases where people don't maintain their landscaping and probably should have trimmed those bushes or whatever, or trimmed some branches on trees and. Uh, and we just don't have the staff to be watching for every bit of that, we go, we might catch a dead tree, uh, but but we're not going to be looking for. You know, things that that kind of that fine a grain.
Fair enough, yeah, I guess, yeah, I brought it up in the wrong section, but.
I I I tell you how that problem gets solved, contact the business owner. And say, I I couldn't find your place because your your sign is overgrown, it will be fixed the next day.
Well, you know, and I, I I relate it to having clear vision when you pull up to a stop sign. That's what I related to, but.
Yeah.
Um, it's not necessarily. Being able to read the, you know, message on a sign, it's. I I've said enough, but I do know it's not the right place for it, so. Thank you.
All right, other comments on eleven fourteen? Okay, next item is part twenty-seven amendments to section twelve point three, non-conforming lots. Uh, just basically rewarding uh, what they have to comply with. To all zoning district dimensional standards as opposed to with an area. Uh, part twenty-eight amendments to section fourteen point one. Just deleted a section, uh, part twenty-nine amendments to section fourteen point three. Uh, this is the one we discussed earlier. Uh, which transfers authority to grant special use permits from the township board to the planning commission. Which people seem to be comfortable with.
That's actually the last, last section, the rest of it's just housekeeping.
Right. Yeah, it's basically, it it changes the procedures, so the procedures have been modified to reflect that from, from. Recommend to approve. Township board's action has been removed, of course. Anybody have anything from from this section? I'm kind of scanning it, looking for typos and things like that, but. Anything else, any other comments on anything from the document itself? So again, our potential action would be to set a public hearing date, if we're, if we feel like this is ready to be, to be seen. By the public and to be commented on, then we can go ahead and and set a public hearing date, what would be the first available date? Would it, it wouldn't be next week, it would be at our, would it be at our September meeting?
Yeah, your September twenty-first regular meeting would be the the date for it, and and certainly we can make the changes we discussed tonight. So the 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 version for the public hearing would incorporate those changes that you've agreed to.
So we need a motion to um, to establish the public meeting?
Yeah, a motion to set the public hearing for September twenty-first.
Well, I'd like to go ahead and make that motion to set the uh, public hearing for September twenty-first with uh. Um, the condition that the discussed changes uh, this evening are incorporated into that content.
Okay, motion was made by Buckley, is there a second?
For.
Okay, I saw a hand from Fuller. Uh, so the motion is to, is to set a public hearing date on the uh, zoning ordinance amendments. Um, with the editorial changes to be made that we discussed tonight, uh, any further discussion? All right, since this is a business item, I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Lap?
Yes.
Tharing?
Yes.
Squatrito?
Yes.
Buckley?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Darren?
Yes.
Fuller?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried.
Very good, thank you. Um. So that really completes what we needed to do on that particular item, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so at this point, we'll move to extended public comment, so. Uh, this portion of the meeting where individuals are invited to address the planning commission on any item, whether it was on tonight's agenda or not. If there's anybody who'd like to do that, there, they should hit their raise hand button, we'll uh. Facilitate their comment and we ask them, uh, give us your name and address for the minutes, unlimited your comments to five minutes on any issue. Extended public comment is open at nine nineteen. And again, I'll just, I note that there's, there are no attendees, so uh, there's no one here to comment, so we'll go ahead and close that back up also at nine nineteen. Uh, final board comment, any comments from board members? We meet one week from tonight, correct? Regular meeting. And packets are, have gone out or are going out?
Uh, you you'll see the packets tomorrow. We have two site plans, uh, both of which you have, uh, are projects you've seen, the Summer Hill Village, uh, Mobile Home Park. It's coming back to you with a much better looking site plan, uh, and Dollar General is coming in with their final site plan as well. So and then, uh, uh, I think the other item on the agenda is to talk about in-person meetings, uh, that, as we mentioned the last time we would talk about. So you'll see, you'll see a memo from me on that topic.
Okay. And what about, uh, what about the, um. Parks and Recreation Master Plan?
I I wish that that was on this agenda, I have not gotten uh, my part done on that one, so uh, it it won't be on this agenda.
Okay, that's perfectly fine, we, um, I think we all can relate to. Having enough stuff that you haven't gotten to. All right, all right, so so really just the two, uh, the two site plans.
Yeah.
That's good, all right. Any, any other comments from people? Okay, then if not, uh, enjoy the humidity and uh. We'll look forward to seeing everyone next week, we have completed our agenda, we stand in adjournment.
Thank you, have a good night, everyone.